Well, good evening, everyone. It is just after 5:30 PM on Monday, June 1st, 2020. This is a public meeting of the School Board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours prior to the meeting, notice of time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted in each school building, the entrance doors, at the Education Service Center, and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WIBD, the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. I'll ask our superintendent to confirm whether this meeting was properly posted? Yes, it was. Great, thank you. Why don't we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. It is a pleasure to see everyone in person. I want to thank the administration for helping set this up. We are in a room where we are all socially distanced for individuals who are here. If you desire a mask, I believe there's a supply up at the podium. And again, great to see everyone in person. So why don't we proceed with our agenda? And the first item is the approval of the agenda. Any questions or comments with regard to the agenda? Otherwise, a motion would be in order.
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the agenda. Any final discussion? Great, since we're all here in person, we can do this by voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, the motion carries. Thank you. So the next item on our agenda is Recognition of Scientists in Residence Program. And Laura Jackson is going to be facilitating this, but also we have a guest on the phone, so I'm just gonna turn on the microphone here.
On the phone, joining us on the phone is Carly Hints of the River Edge, excuse me, of the River Edge Nature Center. And joining us in person is Rachel Farick. Rachel Farick has been our Scientist in Residence in West Bend the last two years. And I want to talk a little bit about the Scientist in Residence Program. In May of 2015, the School Board heard the proposal to start the Scientist in Residence Program and accepted that proposal. It was a very unique partnership. River's Edge Nature Center had worked to get a grant to fund this position. They also continued to work, because the grant didn't fully fund it, they worked with donor, private donors and foundations in order to fund the position fully for the West Bend School District. And that has gone on for the last five years as the original agreement had indicated. To say that the program made an impact is accurate, but seems to lower the extent of which the impact has been. So the original program started out with the goal of increasing the usage of our outdoor classroom. We have a beautiful space, great building, wonderful trails, a wonderful nature area where our students get to observe in different habitats, including an oak forest.
Oak savanna.
Thank you. The oak savanna, and it's, which is a very dwindling habitat in the state of Wisconsin. We also set out at the time to improve the outdoor classroom learning environment and to increase the professional expertise, originally targeting our K-6 staff, and their ability to take science outdoors. And not just science, but learning across the disciplines outdoors. So there's been a documented 49% result, 49% improvement in teachers using the outdoor lessons independently. And that has been as a result of our Scientist in Residence Program. We are now identified as a school forest, and we have seen improvement of the infrastructure in the outdoor classroom and school forest as a result of the work of this program. So some of the things that have happened that benefit our district and our students are the facilitated field trips of our, for our students out to the outdoor classroom. By going out there with a Scientist in Residence, our teachers have had modeling of how to conduct the lessons, of increasing their understanding of the natural areas, and again, seeing their students in a new environment. Our teachers, some of their comments were, you know, the kids are asking, when can they come back? The kids are asking about, and continue to talk about, the things they observed and what they saw. And that alone is a testament to what the experience meant to them. But also on the slide is just a hint of what has been left behind. So in our Google Share Drive, we have an outdoor education drive, which is accessible to all the employees in the district. Within that drive are lessons folders with different resources, and it's just a phenomenal resource for our staff. The trail maps have been updated, and the trails are looking really good. They've been flagging, well, they were intended to flag the buckthorn on some of the field trips. I forgot what the students flagged last spring.
Buckthorn.
Yeah, last spring too. And which is an invasive species in Wisconsin. And they're really doing, we're teaching the students how to do some maintenance and what to look out for. And in addition to our outdoor classroom, each of our elementary schools and Silverbrook have identified areas on the school property where outdoor lessons could be occurring on a regular basis. Those lessons are also included in the folders that our teachers can access. The statement you see to the, when you're looking at it to the right of the picture on the slide is a statement from one of our teachers. And again, it speaks to the impact. Because of their work with Rachel, they're taking their kids outside more, and it's aligned with their current curriculum. During our emergency distance learning, Rachel and some of the other River Edge staff were creating little videos of things that the students could do in their own backyard, of things they could do if they were exploring in their, in an outdoor area that was safe to explore, and showing them what's coming up and what's, how it's changing outside throughout the distance learning. So each week of our distance learning, they supplied lessons, activities, and little videos, which were just really helpful and quite fun to see, actually, and encouraging. And so continuing to build that, that connection for our students. On this slide, you'll see some further impact statements of the program. Some of these statements were from our teachers. Some of these statements were through partners. Project LEAF had come here in January to provide some professional development utilizing outdoor classroom space. It brought in people from other districts who also got to see our outdoor classroom. And really, the program that we had with River's Edge and the Scientist in Residence really set the district up well to have our teachers be able to continue this, outdoor experiences for our students, and to continue the usage of the outdoor classroom. Now, if you recall, originally, the goal was to work with K-6 teachers. Our 4K staff have all had professional development provided by Rachel. And she has been a significant connection for them to outdoor environments, both at River Edge and the outdoor classroom. She has also worked with them, if you recall, we have nature-based 4K at the Y, and she has worked with the staff there as well. So that, again, that impact went beyond the original program. She's also worked with the high school staff and has worked with high school classes on, with regard to the nature center. She connected with the tech and engineering department as well as the science department. So this program provided to us by River's Edge has really made a tremendous impact. And we wanted to take a few minutes tonight to thank Rachel. She's been a huge positive force. And Carly, and Sunny Knudsen, and Jessica Jens. Carly is on the phone tonight. Megan Johnson was our first Scientist in Residence, and she had moved out of the area. But this program has been a good asset to the district and just a wonderful thing and experience for our students and our teachers. So we just really wanted to say thank you to River's Edge and to you, Rachel, and Carly.
Thank you so much. You're on the bus.
Carly, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I just unmuted myself. Can you hear me?
We can hear you fine.
Wonderful. Well, I just wanted to take the opportunity to echo the thanks. I have been fortunate to be working with the Scientist in Residence partnership from the beginning, so since 2015, and even a little bit before then when it was just an idea. And I have to say that the model is really simple. It's this idea of empowerment. And I do, where the Scientist in Residence leads, you, we do, so co-teaching and mentoring and working with teachers, and you do. And seeing the sustainability and, and all that Rachel in particular has put into place in the last couple of years has, has been just truly inspiring. But I also have to say that West Bend was the pilot, so the very first district to say yes to our brilliant idea, right, of Scientists in Residence. And I have to give a huge thanks to Laura and her district team for really implementing and being true partners, enabling the system level change that, that has occurred thus far. So on behalf of River Edge, we're just really grateful for the partnership over the last five years, and we're looking forward to spreading this model into other districts and hopefully, you know, helping where we can continue to work in West Bend. So thank you again.
Thank you, Carly. Thank you, Rachel.
I just want to echo Carly and the teachers that are wonderful and great, working with everybody, and just the idea that we're gonna, gonna continue with the teachers and what they've learned and that they can continue those lessons at outdoor classroom and in their green spaces around the schools.
That's great. Can I, may I ask a quick question? You talked about piloting this for the West Bend District. How many other districts?
We have two school districts, the other district.
Great.
We have two.
That's excellent. We're very, very grateful for everything that you've done to, to help us raise our standards around outdoor education. It's, I've seen some examples, and Gloria, you and I were talking about examples where children who don't necessarily learn well in an indoor classroom can often learn very, very well in an outdoor classroom. And so it's great to have that as an additional option to help serve our, serve the need of our district residents. So thank you so much, really appreciate it.
And my pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. All right. Carly, I think we're all, we're all set, so I'm gonna release you unless you'd like to listen in on the rest of the meeting.
I appreciate that. I do need to go tend to bath time, but.
Then by, then by all means, we'll release you. Thank you again so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, I really appreciate the opportunity to tune in.
All right. Have a good night.
Okay.
Bye-bye.
You too.
All right. Technology all around us. Okay. All right, let's see. All right, the next item on our agenda then is public participation. And I'll, I'll pause, I've not received any public comment cards. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? All right. Hearing none. We'll move on then with our first action item, which is the approval of the consent agenda. And in the consent agenda, were the minutes of the May 11, 2020 regular board meeting, dispersments posted to June 1, 2020, revenues and expenses in the aggregate through April 2020, and ratification on a contract.
So moved, sorry.
Sorry. All right, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any final discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, the motion carries and the consent agenda is approved. Which takes us to the June 15 Committee of the Whole Meeting to change that to a special meeting. And superintendent, maybe you can give us some background.
Just a, we mentioned earlier, in order to do any business at all, you can't do that at a committee of the whole. And so you'd need to have a special board meeting. And so last time, we called a, we had to get some information out to you at the last minute for that to happen. So we know that there will be several action items at the June 15 meeting, so we would request that you change that Committee of the Whole meeting on June 15 to a special board meeting.
I'll move to change the June 15 Committee of the Whole meeting to a special board meeting.
I'll second.
Motion and second to approve the change of the committee meeting to a special board meeting. Any final discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, so the next item on our agenda is something that we've talked about for some time now, and obviously, a lot of work has gone into. So Mr. Hanson, we're ready to talk about the Certified Staff/Teacher Compensation Model.
All right, thank you for having me once again. You are certainly right that this is a discussion that's been going on for quite a while, and we are happy to present for you, to you for approval, the final product here. So we've had a lot of discussion around what the compensation model would look like. I won't rehash the entire element, but kind of go into some of the overview. We've talked already, had nauseam about some of the reasons we were moving away from the previous framework. Anyone who's watching or listening afterwards, I encourage them to check out the Appendix A in the new compensation model, as really put that together to really document, you know, very, in a very logical, reasoned way, why this change is being made, some of the challenges we had with the previous framework. So now we're moved to a new framework, which is the culmination of work with multiple compensation committees truly over almost roughly three years, and three different resource directors as well. So we've, we've had a lot of different input along the way, but really, the key components have remained relatively stable. Really compensating a lot for, philosophically, for the inputs that we believe will lead to strong student achievement, okay? And proven inputs in terms of meaningful professional development, continuing education that make a teacher even more impactful than they may have been before. And then also looking for multiple pathways by which to accomplish that. You've got some of your traditional pathways that you see in most teacher or certified staff compensation models in terms of master's degrees and additional licensures, but then also giving opportunity for additional compensation through some of the more recently common methods, such as national board certification, and then micro credentialed and then micro endorsement, which I'll talk about a little bit, in a little bit. Since we last talked, I believe it was April 27th, board meeting, we had some continued discussion, just been a few minor changes that I want to let the board know as they're looking at the document. The first is the title. Really appreciated some input that we received from our incoming superintendent, Jennifer Wimmer. And one of the, you know, one of the real advantages of having someone like her come and provide that input is she's a, she's a new lens, right? She hasn't been through all this, all this time, and the first thing she said is, well, it covers more than teachers, right? And I was like, yeah. So why do we call it Teacher Compensation for instance? Because we always have, right? So really, we looked at some more appropriate language. So we're really shifting to Certified Staff Compensation Model, and that's why the title is different, because as it explains, and there's a little section added on one of the early pages, explaining all the different staff groups that are covered by the compensation model. It's not just teachers, it is school counselors, school psychologists, speech and language pathologists, instructional coaches, interventionists, curriculum coordinators, literacy specialists, there's a whole slew of contracted staff that are covered by this. So we felt that, that really was more inclusive term, so you do see a different title on the document. We did have further discussion and decided to add a few more licenses that are eligible for the expertise pay stipend, especially pertaining to administrator licensing. We know that we get incredible value and impact out of, you know, out of all of our staff that show leadership, but especially those individuals who have pursued that administrator license are often seeking those opportunities to be involved, and the district certainly benefits from that involvement. So we added that to the list of licenses that are proposed to be compensated an additional amount for. The next item is more structural. In the previously presented document, we had combined a lot of elements together into the, what was called the Teacher Compensation Chart. There were a lot of pieces there that we felt to be better to split out. So now that one document has been replaced by a number of documents that are up for approval this evening, which include the expertise pay document, laying out all the types of expertise pay that would be compensated for under the, under the model. The salary ceiling document is a, that, that element is a separate document now, which would be approved on an annual basis by the school board. In fact, all of these are brought back to the board on an annual basis for review, possible updating and approval. And then the novice salary scale progression chart is its own document. I'm gonna talk just a moment about that. We have done quite a bit of analysis of our novice salary schedule and what that relates to, our teachers who are brand new, or I should just say teachers, certified staff, who are brand new to the education field, so really those starting educators. When the previous framework was put into effect in 2014, those numbers were very competitive. They're, those numbers have not been adapted since 2014 when it started, and the competitiveness of those numbers, while not horrific, has certainly degraded over time, as you would expect any starting salary scale to. Mr. Sarno, the Director of Finance, and I had spent quite a bit of time talking about, you know, how we could appropriately kind of catch up to where we maybe would like to be. And then we had done some analysis prior to the pandemic happening about, hey, we can afford to do this, make these adjustments, and, and raise some of those starting year salaries. One of the elements we had to really be mindful of around that was, as we increase those first three to four, five years, we were not going to allow someone else to be lapped or passed who was on the previous schedule, right? So that meant that not only would we be increasing the salaries for people in those first few years that fall on the salary schedule, but we'd have to also allocate some dollars to advance some of the others who are a year or two ahead of that as well. Does that make sense? We were fully prepared to do that, had it built into our preliminary budget discussions. We're pausing that change to the novice progression scale for right now, and we're, you're presented with basically the same school scale that's been in effect. And the reason for that is until we get greater clarity from the state around the budgetary impact of the pandemic on our revenues for next year, we just don't think we're ready to make that call yet. We'd really like to, but we think the most prudent thing to do is just pause right now. If the budgetary situation ends up being nice and rosy, we can certainly revisit this topic at any time. So those were some of the, the key items there. You know, we've had conversation with those committees over a ser, you know, a series of years, and then I could just come back to the key goals of the compensation model are what I'll wrap up with, because that's really the reason we're making a change. There were goals in the previous framework, and the goals weren't achieved by that framework. So we, we need to look at something different. And as it talks about in the opening pages of the model, this model is designed to attract and retain high-quality staff so that we can impact student learning. It's designed to impact student learning by attracting, retaining those staff members who bring those inputs in terms of expertise that will really cause students to learn at their highest level. We want it to be aligned with our mission of excellence for all. And then finally, sustainability, which was a real issue with the previous model in addition to the employee engagement concerns that were brought up. So a lot of work has gone into it, very happy to present with, to you, a final product.
Congratulations. Lot of, lot of hard work, a lot of hours into this, and I'm just curious, Lenny, given the conversations you and I've had in the past, you cite here that, you know, the four different dates that communications were made outbound. Aside from the compensation committee feedback, what have you heard from, from?
So I've had some significant discussions since our last talk with some of the leadership of that compensation committee. Very, you know, no model's perfect, but the feedback I got was, you know, this is substantial improvement from where we've been, and this is something we feel will engage staff, will lead to, you know, or maintain good retention of staff and the attracting of new staff. So in those discussions with the leadership since our last meeting, had positive feedback about, about the model. You know, as we navigate through it, and I'll talk, you know, after we vote on approval, I'll talk about some of the exciting kind of next steps where we're kind of taking on.
Thank you. Wonderful.
Other questions? Comments?
I just have a comment. Seems like this is a topic where if there's, there wasn't too many people here presenting in public participation, so there's not a lot of chatter. So you've done your job well from the communication side, and so what I've seen with talking with, with teachers, being in the district, the momentum is there. I mean, they're, they're very excited from, from the comments they, they've given to me, so I just want to congratulate you on a job well done of communicating. And as you said, it's not perfect for everyone. Everyone wants to be paid more. We have great staff here. We're trying to pay them as much as possible with what we do. So I just have a general comment.
Thank you, Kirk.
Appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
Just kind of reiterate what Kirk just said. Lenny, we purposely held off approval until we could have a face-to-face, if at all possible. We didn't want it to be a, a virtual meeting where we were going to discuss it. We wanted teachers to be able to be here if we could. We wanted the public to be able to come up and talk if they wanted to in, in open comments. And so just a hats off to Lenny, because he really did do a lot of hard work in reaching out to our staff to try to clarify, ask questions, get any kind of feedback he could. And I think the fact that there's not 50 people in the room or waiting to get in the room is an indication of the type of communication that Lenny has provided. So thank you, Lenny.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? None? All right. That being the case, I would make a motion to discontinue the use of the current teacher salary framework and instead approve the implementation of the West Bend Certified Staff Compensation Model and the accompanying 2020, 2021, expertise pay document, salary ceiling document, and novice salary progression scale document. Hopefully, I got that right.
Second.
Thank you.
Lenny, at the bottom of the novice page and the salary ceiling page, just the date needs to be changed to today's date.
Yep, those were the drafts from last time. And then on the top of the, all those documents, you'll see there's kind of a blank space where we'll fill in once it actually is approved.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other discussion? With the motion and second, I'll, I'll call the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, the motion carries. Thank you again very much.
All right, excellent. Just to give a little bit of input about the direction we're going here, you'll see on one of the pages we talked about, you know, there's a very systematic approach to repeatable actions that have to take base, take place on an annual basis. And you will see, you know, that negotiations with the WBA about compensation is one of those annual items. We've had, you know, ongoing conversation with WBA, and they understand and have expressed their understanding that with the current pandemic, while we had hoped actually to be in negotiations either already or very shortly, we are in a pause right now until we get a better idea of what the budgetary situation is. But that, that, you know, that is on the horizon, that as soon as we can, you know, get some certainty about the budget, that we will be moving forward with that, and that has been communicated to the WBA. Also wanted to just expand a little bit about some of the exciting opportunities with some of the micro endorsement partnerships with some of the universities that we've talked to. Reached out to a lot of universities about how we can work together to really find continued education that meets the district's needs and is high quality. And now looking at probably two partners. We were at one partner and now really looking at two. There were a few others that maybe didn't meet our needs as specifically as we want, but I've certainly got at least two really strong partners right now who not only can provide, you know, some of their typical courses for continued education, but will actually custom design continued education for our needs, what we're looking for, provided through their university. And then some of them even offer the opportunities if we have experts in our own district, our own staff in those areas, can serve potentially as adjunct professors, teaching those courses to our own staff through the university level, which I think is really an outstanding way to promote the professionalism and expertise of the staff that we have. So. of the staff that we have. So really excited about where we're going to be able to take this. And the customization of continuing education, I think, is going to be a really outstanding benefit to us that, you know, the Teaching and Learning Department and Dr. Wimmer will be able, I think, to take advantage of and leverage to really find those areas that we think are the focus of our district and continue to grow the expertise of our staff around it.
Great. Thank you again.
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is the second reading of three policies, two revised policies, homework and early graduation, and a new policy, student wellness. And if I remember my board policies correctly, with unanimous approval of the board, we could make these policy changes on second discussion.
That's correct.
All right. Take it away, Laura.
So we reviewed these policies at our last meeting, and the early graduation policy we reviewed previous to that. I was, just wanted to open it up to any additional questions or comments on any of those policies.
Any questions for Laura or comments on any of the policies?
I'll move to approve Board Policy 345.3, homework.
Do we have a second? Thank you. A motion in second with regard to approval of 345.3 homework. Any final discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. All right.
I move to approve Board Policy 345.61, early graduation.
I'll second that. Motion in second to approve Policy 345.61. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right.
I move to approve Board Policy 452, student wellness.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion in second to approve new policy 452, student wellness. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. All right. Thank you. The next item that I have is a discussion item related to comprehensive literacy model implementation update. And Heidi is going to be helping us with that.
So Heidi Singola is our K-12 district, pre-K-12 district reading coordinator. And she is going to be presenting tonight with some of our model classroom teachers and some of our literacy specialists and some of our administrators in the district. If you recall, last year, we discussed the implementation of a comprehensive literacy model as our approach to literacy instruction and a shift into different practices for our students. At that time, we identified the model teacher, the plan to utilize model teachers, and some of our model teachers, are they all here? Are they all here? They've all contributed to the presentation that you're going to see tonight, and they are here to share their experiences with you. I will say, they have really been tremendous in the work that they have done to improve literacy instruction in the district. They took a risk and put their learning, and they learned ahead of all of our other staff, and then opened up their classrooms for other staff from other buildings and within their own building to come and observe them teaching, to observe the new learning that our teachers were doing, and put into practice. We are moving into year two of the, of the literacy model, and we'll be back next meeting to talk a little bit more about some of the elements that will be beginning next year. But today, you're going to hear about some of the celebrations from this past year.
Aye.
All right. So we're really excited to tell you guys about what we've been doing this year with literacy. So we have some, like Laura referenced, some of the model classroom teachers are here, some of the principals, and some of our literacy specialists. So we're pretty excited about that. So who were all of the people that were part of this group? So on the kind of center column there, you'll see who our model classroom teachers were this year. These were all people who volunteered, or maybe kind of we kind of roughed them up a little bit and said, will you do this? But they all did it very willingly. And so it was really awesome that they were so willing to do something this amazing. And then this year, we had a new kind of position with our reading role and had our literacy specialist. So not only did our literacy specialist just work with teach, or just work with students, they also worked with teachers this year, which was something new. So they were the partners with our literacy specialist. And then I myself was actually with a model classroom teacher as a part of my training and my work as well. So that was very exciting. So what did we all work on this year? These were our major focus areas for the year. One of our biggest pieces was working on the independent structures piece. So when a teacher is not directly with a student, what are the students doing that is meaningful with literacy and really helping them get to improving their skills in authentic ways? So we did a lot of focusing on that. We also talked about conferring with students and helping them to goal set and be aware of what they needed to work on. Language workshop was an instructional framework that we use that really boosts students' language acquisition, boosts background knowledge, and really helps the whole class come together as a social community. And everything we did was grounded in theory and research and best practices. So that was a big piece of our work this year as well. So how did we support those goals? As Laura alluded to, we set up model classroom visits, which was, at the time that we went out on March 13th, we had 55 of them in place. They were not set up until the end of January. So roughly the last week about of January, people could sign up for these visits. So what that meant was if I was a first grade teacher at Fair Park, and I wanted to go see a first grade model classroom teacher, I had some release time out of my room. I went with the literacy specialist. I went over and observed those four practices that I said we worked on this year in somebody else's room. I talked it through and thought about a goal for myself, and then went back to my classroom and applied it. So it really helped us come together as a system of professional learners, built our collaboration. I had people say, like, this was the first time I've gotten to get out of my classroom and see someone in another classroom for probably 15 years. And it was the best thing I've done. So a lot of really positive feedback from staff members on that. Our model classroom teachers were also our hinge point in making all of this work. So they spoke up at staff meetings. They spoke up at their building PLC meetings. They spoke up at district PD sessions. And they really helped to bring everything together. So they had to really jump in with two feet, try some things, and speak their experiences to others and help others feel comfortable in the process. In addition to speaking out at the meetings, they were also kind of roped into helping us take pictures of things they'd done in their classrooms. They were asked to create some videos of their practices that we got to utilize. So they really did a lot so that we have our own little archive here in district that we can use of professional development pieces that aren't things we're finding off the internet or aren't from districts across the country. They're from right here in our community, right here in our classrooms, which is really powerful. So I think it's really important that you hear what some of our model classroom teachers' experiences were. I think it's really powerful, worth noting that, I think, I can't say for certain, but from the informal emails that I got, a majority of our model classroom teachers were recommended for the ROLPHS Education Award this year as well. Two of them were awarded that award. So I think that's really powerful that their work really spoke volumes even to their peers around them. So just wanted you to be aware of that. So I'm going to let those that are here speak to their slides and speak to their experiences. And then the ones that aren't, I'll kind of jump back in. So Fair Park team?
Hello, board.
Hello.
Great to see you all in person.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, great to be here, Joel. Thank you. Well, so I'm starting as the kindergarten rep. I, at Fair Park, lead the grade level teams out for kindergarten. It's been an awesome experience for me. I came from more of the intermediate, so hopping down in kindergarten really is a cool spot. Like, I think of our system as an early intervention system. We work to build the kids up as soon as they come, build strong foundations. And the PCL model and the experts that I'm bringing with me today really pay tribute to that. So I guess for me, I'm saying, the thing that I would say for both my literacy specialist, Bridget, and the amazing kindergarten teacher, Renee, they have made themselves totally vulnerable. They've given up the boundaries and the walls that keep maybe hiding behind a curriculum or hiding behind other systems, and really laid bare, this is what we're doing. This is what we see as high yield. And they've created some really cool things from that. So I'm not going to talk anymore because they were the ones in the weeds on it. But thank you again for hearing about this.
Yeah, thank you for having us. Besides learning how to sit in a chair that's only about like a foot, foot high, it really was, this whole PCL, PCL model has really like just brought collaboration in so many ways amongst students, amongst grade levels, amongst vertical grade level conversations, amongst interventionists and administration and district-wide. So it's been a really great experience. And I've been very blessed to work with a very special lady. So it's been great. And as I was thinking about this slide, this is my biggest, biggest takeaway, and I think for many of the students too, that students not only produce quality work, but we're also engaged in the process and the process of learning. And they develop tools. And when you develop tools and you have that tool belt around you, you can carry that tool belt around for many years as you are moving up in the grade level. So it's been a great experience.
Thanks, Bridget. It was fantastic working with someone of her expertise as well. I just got such a bang on him with the, she'd be like, Aaliyah, you, you know, try this approach, try this. And I was, that's not Aaliyah. That's why she's not helping you right now. But I say that in jest only because it was, you know, when I first started teaching, it was, I teach, you learn. I teach, you learn. And now it's really like, we teach and we learn. And I think the most powerful thing was watching our Kinnear brothers. And if you have an excuse why your middle school or your high school students can't do this, there is no excuse. The Kinnear brothers can do this. It was just very powerful hearing them say, I think this needs to be a goal of mine, because I'm not quite sure how to make that be. I always put the tail on the wrong side. So keeping in mind that we really start with no letters and sounds to really getting a full partnership of understanding and comprehending that literacy is extremely powerful rather than just asking, where are they holding on to? Why would you choose the five sets? And getting to that much inquiry based. So it's a very organic and very powerful experience for Kinnear brothers. I can talk and talk and talk, but.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jackie Woodmire. I am the literacy specialist at Jackson. I was very blessed to work with Denise Gantner, who yes, won the ROLPHS, ROLPHS Award this year. So the staff just so appreciated the fact that, I, I kept saying, our model classroom teachers, I applaud them because they were brave and vulnerable this whole year. It's like, let's, we come in, we talk, let's try this. They try it, they fail, we fail, we tweak some stuff, try it again. And eventually got it to a point where the kids were just doing it, which was just, and this is first grade. Kindergarten starts it off, and then it goes into first grade. The kids were, we talked a lot about being a classroom community. And it was really important that they were able to trust each other, they were able to understand each other's strengths, understand each other's weaknesses, problem solve things together as a team, and help each other out. That was one of the things that was super important and worked so well in this, in the PCL model. The kids were strategic thinkers. And, I mean, isn't that what we want? I mean, literacy, yes, absolutely. But they're strategic thinkers. They were asking questions, inquiring about stuff. That's what we want for their whole life. We, they were able to set their own goals, and we'd have conversations about it. And so much so that there was a time where I was in a meeting for two days, and I had made a, I was meeting, I said I'd meet with one of the students. I forgot. And I came in the next day, and she said, Mrs. Woodmire, you're supposed to meet with me. I need to talk to you about my writing goal. And I'm like, oh, yep, okay, here we go. Yes, let's, I'll do it right now. So they just took on their own learning, and it was just awesome. It was also really awesome working with the other literacy specialists and coaches. We would problem solve things together, ask how they were doing stuff. So when you think about a system, isn't that what we want? We're talking to our instructional coaches, our principals, our other people from other buildings. It was just truly an amazing, amazing time. Thank you.
Thank you.
So then, speaking to Green Tree, we don't have here with us tonight Carrie Dresden and Jerry Kretlow. They were respective first and second grade model classroom teachers as well. I had the privilege of working directly with Carrie. And as you'll see, I'm going to skip forward to her slide real quick. As you'll see, a big piece of her experience was all around the engagement, that she saw the student engagement really increase, that when she let them take ownership of their learning, when she let them set their goals, when she let them pick what literacy activities they engaged in during that choice time, she really saw that engagement go up. In addition, she saw those comprehension levels go up, even with kids that she wouldn't have expected to have so much to say about certain topics. That was a real benefit of what she saw. And I will say, just being in her room, it was really powerful to kind of like, all right, let's try this out. Let's see how it works. Ooh, that kind of didn't work well. Let's, let's tweak it and try this. Oh, look, the kids really got it. So it was just really that great learning lab to build on that student, that student experience. And then Jerry Kretlow, her big thing was, she really loved how this whole, all this learning was bringing the whole system together. It wasn't just about her. It wasn't just about Green Tree. It wasn't just about second grade. It was about bringing everyone together and everyone having that common language and everyone having those common experiences. So that was really huge from her room as well. So I'm going to let Adrian talk about third grade because that was where our model classroom teacher was.
Hi, everybody. Adrian Schneider, principal at Decorah. I'm excited to speak on behalf of Julie Leto, who was the model classroom at Decorah. Karine Tice was our reading specialist who supported the work that Julie did. And I'd like to just capture what I've heard my colleagues say up to this point is really about learning and growing and doing and saying, whoops, that didn't work. The beauty of it was, being the model classroom, one of the things that we really had to sell to our model classroom teachers last spring was, this isn't you figured it all out, and now you get to tell everybody else what to do. It was, you're going to be a little bit ahead of everybody else to learn and try and fail and do, and then share out your successes and your, and your challenges with your colleagues so that they can maybe avoid doing the same missteps or celebrate the successes that you did and be able to start right out of the gate with their classrooms to have those successes. So I think that was one of the things that was a really powerful piece at Decorah, with Julie especially, as she was a little nervous to get started with it. But as she got rolling and really saw from her students what they loved doing. Third grade is an interesting year. It's a, it's a year that in all of the years that I have been a principal, third grade is that year that kids maybe might change their attitudes towards learning a little bit, or parents might say, man, my kids never struggled before, and now third grade is really challenging. We all hate that we left school the way that we did. And I think one of the biggest things was that our third graders in February, March were like, we love reading. Can we do this all day? We love partner reading. We love conferring with my teacher so that she can learn more about me as a reader and select really good books for me. We can have those really powerful book talks. And then also just that language workshop. That has been one of the structures that all of our teachers have put into place during the distance learning with their students that has been really, the kids have loved it. They've really responded well to it even during distance learning. So I think that just speaks to the powerful work that the teachers did in the months leading up to the school closure to really solidify those skills and expectations. So we're really proud of the work of our model classrooms, especially as they kind of just had that, that leg up a little bit on the, on the learning. And then when we get back next year, we have a whole new slew of people that are going to come into the, the work as well. And be excited to take that on because of what they've been able to see from the leaders doing the work this year. Thank you.
That avatar looks just like Julie Leto. Tell her, tell her I like her little avatar.
Hi, I'm Rachel Reinert. I teach fourth grade at McLean. I was lucky enough to have Jill Ortiz as a reading specialist supporting me through my PCL journey this year. For me, it really was about the engagement piece for the students and the staff. It really worked twofold, and it really created a sense of belonging for my students as a family and for McLean, us as model classroom teachers. And then it just kind of spread district-wide. Way back in August, Heidi was doing some professional development with staff. And one of the questions she asked was for us to list ways that we knew students were engaged in their work. And to be honest, it was a little bit crooked. Like, people didn't really know what to say. We said things like, there wouldn't really be any behavior issues with students, like, they would produce a product. And I myself thought, well, like, what, what would that look like? And it wasn't until after going through the school year that I realized what engagement truly was for my students. I have three toddlers at home, and I think about, like, do they know how to sit? Well, they don't know how to sit when I want them to, but turning on Barney, suddenly now they have that skill of like, sitting. And it's the same thing with reading with fourth graders. You think, is it that this text is too hard for you? Do you not know how to summarize? Do you not have enough background knowledge? Like, why are you not completing this task? And as soon as they were reading something that they were engaged in, that was their choice, that's where the power of it was. I was almost, and I hate to say this, but disappointed that we didn't have standardized testing this year because I felt like my students would have scored off the charts, and it was on their own and it was on their own accord. I was so proud of them. I truly, I truly became the facilitator, not the teacher. And it was so powerful for students. When I was writing this, I said, "Being a part of a group of teachers and specialists while implementing the PCL practices in my classroom was by far and above the most profound experience I've ever had in my teaching career." When asked to describe what was happening in my classroom, I always answered in the same way. You just have to come in, you have to talk to the students. It's a completely different feeling and level of excitement for literacy that I've never seen before. Our classroom culture changed because of the PCL process and it was transformed both in my classroom with students, at McLean, and as a system.
So our model classroom teacher from Silverbrook then was Erin Spade. He teaches sixth grade there. He has some notes here on his slide for you, but our biggest thing takeaway off of his slide is the ripple effect that this process created. So I also had to go through a very high level of training this year. About a week a month, I was in training sessions and learning about things and then weeknights as well. And then I took that training and I spread it out to our literacy specialists and then they spread it out to our model classroom teachers. And then the model classroom teachers spread it out to the, all of the teachers in the building. So it was this giant ripple that just kept growing every time that new learning happened. And that really impacted everybody, especially our students in the end. And that was the biggest thing that he took away from there. So then I'm going to invite Jenny and Sarah to come up from Badger.
Hi, I'm Jenny Robinson. I'm a literacy specialist at Badger and I had the awesome opportunity to work with Chrissy Steinhaus, an eighth grade teacher, so you can see her amazing slide that I was pretty impressed with. I would say, I could never do all that. But I would say the PCL model for both Chrissy and I this year, it really helped us to become reflective practitioners together. And I think she says it best at the bottom of her slide, I'm just going to reflect on her slide too, where she, we really reflected and she kind of put there that she moved from being the guide on the side. That's what she became, she was, started being the sage on the stage. So that, that piece of us working together and being reflective practitioners, that was something she watched away from. I would say she was also a very, we were both, she was a very responsive educator. We, while she was conferring with her students in reading, she started to set classroom goals based on conferring and individual goals for the students based on their reading and was very responsive to the students. And through that, being that reflective practitioner and being responsive to her students, the kids were really engaged. And I know you've heard some people talk about engagement, but if you were able to walk in her room and see, you know, 13, 14-year-olds and they're all reading and they had a voice and choice in what they read and what their goals were and what their plan was moving forward in the classroom, it was amazing because we all know that that's not an easy task with teenagers. So hats off to her for that work.
I'm Sarah Roloff. I'm the assistant principal at Badger. And I feel so lucky to have worked with Jenny, our literacy specialist, and Erin Faust, who is one of the coaches at Badger. Jenny and Erin and I took time and met with each ELA teacher individually. We wanted to know how the PCL rollout was taking place in their classroom, what strategies have they tried, what strategies were students really fond of? And then we were able to talk with the teachers about, what's a personal goal that you want to set for yourself? Because they learned a lot this year, they had a lot of PD and it was cool to hear them reflect, like Jenny talked about, on how they could make their classroom better. After those meetings then, we really set the stage for coaching cycles to happen. Unfortunately then, the pandemic hit and we haven't been able to do that. So I feel like we're in a really great spot though, to get those going in the fall or whenever we do return to face-to-face teaching. Thank you.
In addition to the support all of our model classroom teachers gave, I just need to take a moment to give recognition also to our building administrators, our district administrators, literacy specialists, instructional coaches. All of those job description groups participated in a book study this year. We met once a month and we really worked on making sure that we were all in alignment so that we could be supporting classroom teachers in the best way possible. So this really was an entire system effort. It wasn't just a small feat, it was really, really huge. And then our classroom teachers, I need to give a huge shout out to them because they really worked hard, they really took the time to seek our model classroom teachers out. They took time to ask questions. They've just really engaged in the process and been really active in participating in all of it. So what questions can I answer for you?
These are all the model teachers who are here tonight, but all of the teachers would have been working with these model teachers in the building, correct?
Absolutely, yep.
So next year, do we identify a whole new group of model teachers?
So we are, we have identified a new group of model classroom teachers for next year. We put out a survey to see who was interested and so this year we had one model teacher from each site because it was our first year, we kind of needed to get a slow roll and figure out how everything worked. So next year, we're very excited, we will have two model classroom teachers from each site, K through eight. And we're working on, starting to spread this to the high school in participation with the high school principals as well.
Great.
Two additional model classroom teachers, yes. So there will be three total, mhm, next year.
Per?
Per building.
Building. Awesome.
Yeah, very awesome.
Cool. So Adrian and Tristan is the principals in the room. So you've got incoming fourth graders, incoming first graders that have seen this firsthand. What will their experience be in the fall? Do they kind of go back, revert back to the old-fashioned model? Or will, are there teachers next year comfortable enough in this that we're going to be able to perpetuate it and propel forward, kind of that ripple effect that Heidi talked about?
Yeah, that's a really great question. Some of the work that we did, I've been in the district for five years now and I was lucky enough to be here when we started our Bridges Math Program. And the end result now, not end, but where we're at now is that our students, like, our middle school, Silverbrook Middle School, they've kind of had to redesign their flow of instruction because of the scope and sequence of what's going on at the elementary school. I think the same thing is going to be true for this PCL model where our students really are having so much voice and choice. We're not going to have any choice but to continue. And the teachers really want that as well. I think they've seen the power in what has taken place, even though we were cut a little bit short this year. Something that I had a thought when you had asked the question before, now it just escaped me.
Adrian, I'll hop in real quick and let you finish.
Thank you. You know exactly what I'm thinking.
Well, so Paul, two other parts to that. I think none of Heidi's learning was done in isolation. And I think when she spoke about Erin Spade at Silverbrook, the ripple effect really has been in full. Really the four pillars, the independent structures, that's good stuff to have. Like, we're going from a model of saying, "We're doing chapter one, page one, everyone's doing this lesson," to a model of much more broad instruction based in conferring, based in discussion. So those pillars are unanimous, like, that's happened, that happens in our weekly PLC meetings with all teachers. That's been learning, that's been happening on a district level and then down to a grade level and then down to building and then teams. So that's been perpetuated, there is no going back. And that's been part of our job as the principal team, to make sure that feedback and that coaching is there. And our literacy specialists have been in a lot more places than just our model classroom teachers. They have superhero capes that they're wearing presently, because they're taking that coaching, that learning that Heidi has, and they're bringing that down not just to one room. Now they're helping and guiding, but they're sharing and they're really coaching that in a really real way. Entire, and me as well. So I think there's been a lot, a lot that goes to that. So yes, I am confident, and I think Adrian would attest to that, that all of our teachers have our four pillars. They haven't had the quick lab, the fail, quick, the retry, the learn, but they've had exposure and they will be ready come next year to start the year off.
I'd like to add too, I did some goal setting with my specialist teachers in the last month and they've expressed interest in learning how they can apply some of the things that students have learned in their literacy environment into their specialist environment. So I see it also being outside of the literacy environment, kind of bleeding into other facets of the student's school day as well.
Sounds like this group becomes the building captains next year and then you have a whole new set of the, of the model teachers. And so over, how many years will it take before everybody is a model?
Gets a chance to be a model teacher? I don't know, it's going to take a little while. If you figure roughly 18-ish teachers a building and add on two or three per year, it'll take a little bit, but you know, we're in this for the long haul and even though there's a few at a time, we still have everybody getting the professional development, everybody getting the learning on the side and having the opportunity to reach out to our literacy specialists and our coaches.
Chris, I'll say to that, so Renee does not just bring in students. And when I talk about the work that she does, nothing is done inside. I think the more that you break that down as a system, that's one of the true strengths of it. She's planning with her team, her team is asking her questions and that's true for everyone. We have one representative for each grade level. And next year, I will count to the kindergarten, the first grade and the third grade representative.
Captain.
So I think that naturally is true.
Absolutely. So, any other questions I can answer for you?
Yes, well, please accept, please accept our thanks, everyone who came and took hours out of your, out of your evening. This has been very, very impactful, having you here, talking about it. Very much appreciated, great work.
You all put together very good slides, too.
Absolutely.
They were great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your passion and energy.
All right.
Okay.
All right, thank you, everyone. Jen, the next item on the agenda is the district improvement plans. We'll give you a second to pull your materials up there.
Good evening, everyone. I'm very lucky to follow that. And also the compensation model, but really the truth is, these are things that have been in our district plan. And so I just get to get up here and say, "You know what? We planned for this, we prioritize these steps." And I'm here just to give you the update. I can tell you what it says in the wording, but they really brought the energy and that's really why we come and do what we do every day and every year. So tonight's update will just be more information for you, just to know like, kind of where we're at as far as things we're able to complete. I gave you a winter update and so there are some things that haven't changed due to the pandemic, but what I've tried to do is really summarize where we're at with each piece and I'll speak a little bit to each of the areas. If anyone's new listening tonight, I just want to remind everyone or share again that as always in our district continuous improvement plan and our school improvement plans, we identify a goal as well as strategic actions. And throughout the year, what we're doing as leaders throughout the system is monitoring our strategic action completion. And we do that with the green, yellow, and red. And so that's what you'll see tonight. In the area of student learning, as you just heard, a lot of our focus was in the area of literacy and instructional practices. If you look specifically at the strategic actions, you will see the words of gradual release model and balanced literacy approach. I can say those words now, but really what you just saw really is a better demonstration of what that all means. In here in our strategic actions, we also had a certain amount of professional development hours. And so when they talked about that ripple effect, we want to make sure that everyone gets that learning, maybe not at the same time, but by the end of the year, we all have a common language that we're using. So those are some pieces that you'll see that are green, even though the pandemic happened, they're still a priority. Even the end of the school year, we're coming back around some of those practices and some of those strategies that the model classroom teachers learned so that we can be better prepared for next year. Some of the other strategic actions for student learning, some of them are just a little delayed because of the COVID-19, but our work continued in the area of English language learners and developing their individual learning plans, as well as in the area of math. And then also just looking at the professional development for the data process at the high school level, implementing that with all departments. In the area of engagement, this is really another, you know, point of celebration. I think the literacy work that's been happening is a celebration and provides some good momentum. The area of engagement is another celebration as well that I want to share tonight. Two years ago, we did a staff engagement survey and as you recall, one of our goals for this year was to increase the percentage of staff that felt that they were informed on district, you know, events or situations, any information from the district. What we did is as a team, we combined our thoughts and we put together the newsletter called the highlighter. I laugh and I joke at Don because we have this little thing about the highlighter. What we did though, is we really worked as across departments to really make sure that our staff was informed and not just teaching staff, you know, like that was noted in the compensation model, but we're talking about custodians and food service staff and everything and finding the best way to really get everyone informed. And sometimes it's like, "Hey, just a reminder that this information is there." The cool piece with the highlighter is that it's a blog and so it's a searchable platform. And so if I, so like, just the other day, someone asked me something about summer school. And even though with the pandemic, we've kind of paused our highlighter additions, we can still go back and search that and you can search by department or by topic and then you can see all the information by department throughout the school year. So I anticipate we will return to that after the pandemic or next year regardless of what it looks like. So our celebration for that is that we had 64% of our staff feeling informed when we first gave the engagement survey and most recently this year, we had 77% feeling informed. And so that's a great increase. We also had a great response rate for the engagement survey. So those are all just really good things that we want to keep going. As we talk and plan for next year, we'll dig a little bit deeper into the data of how we can get better. One of the things in the area of engagement is still going to happen, but it's just on pause or we're just going to do it a little bit later than originally planned. And that is really sharing the engagement results. Typically, those that would have been shared already and so what we want to do is have time in June with the leadership as far as all the principals to really look at those results and then we will share that with all staff. But we really wanted to do it, do justice and really look at the information and share it with our leadership team and then share it with all staff. You also note that some of the communication pieces for, in the area of engagement have been completed. One of the things Don and Nancy worked on this year was just having some information go out regularly to the community and all stakeholders, just to get the factual information out there. We also put in place the summary after the school board, so that's also on our website. So all that information really does help inform not just our staff, but people in the community. One of the pieces under the engagement in customer satisfaction, one of the benchmark strategic actions was to complete the framework, the compensation framework. And so that is something that Lenny was able to share with you guys tonight and so you can see that that's all green. But again, that's why my job is great, I get to work with people and collaborate and make sure that we're, you know, moving along and as we planned and if not, that's okay. But this is just us talking, the endpoint of, hey, this is how we did. So Lenny had shared all those pieces with the compensation model. In the area of safety and security, it seems like a long time ago that we implemented the visitor management system, but really, we were just talking about that in winter. When we were giving, when I was giving a winter update, we were saying, "How was that going?" I remember, I had said I was just at a building and there were some people, you know, waiting to sign in and everyone seemed okay with the process. But it seems like a long time ago, but that's still on our plan from this year, so a lot has happened. You'll see a lot of areas in here that are green. In Tim's section, I think some of you were joking about it at the beginning, but we give Tim a hard time, but we do appreciate his data security guidance that he gives us. I mean, whether it's 14 or 17 characters, don't worry, Tim, we got it. Yeah, I'm always worried that he's going to change like my background screen to like something after like some of these things of, "Your password now has to be 20 characters." But really, in talking with Tim, a lot of the technology pieces, it's still going to happen. I know that Tim's team has just been working a little bit differently lately with the pandemic and getting devices out and the support pieces. So you'll see that that is yellow on this sheet. He even, he and I talked about, you know, those are probably things that, you know, right away in June, as soon as they can get to, and in July, that those things are going to be done, it just isn't done yet. One of the pieces that is green in here is our strategic action for goal three, which is focused on the social emotional pieces. And this has been an interesting time for this. Throughout our system, we've had the positive behavior supports, the PBIS, and I know that that group was mentioned at a recent leadership team meeting for the work and that they do to really engage students and families. What we've done, Sharon has been my partner with this and really leading out all the work that's been done in pupil services, but really taking it to that next level and thinking not just about, you know, positive behavior supports or behavior codes as those silos, but putting it all together and thinking about this whole child and the social emotional needs and looking at those competencies that the state provides us to really gear our instruction. We've done some great work and that's going to be a major priority for us moving forward and I, between that and PCL, I have some great connections to share with you. In the area of effective and efficient, Andy has talked a lot about budget with our leadership team. Given the... Given the turnover in staff in that department, it was really important that he continued to provide updates and conversations with all the building principals, but also get a better handle on just some of our coding and stuff. And thanks to Andy's leadership, we really are in a better place with the budget and all of our principals understanding that budget. He continues to be available, you know, by phone, by text, you know, by meetings. And so you'll see that the area, the strategic actions focused on the budget pieces, those are all green. The two, the two other areas really focus on our continuous improvement process of, at that teacher level, and really, how do we look at that student information and what are we going to do to make a positive impact on student learning? In our action steps, you'll see that we reference the book Data Into Action. This is one of the things I'll be talking about with Jennifer Wimmer as just part of her onboarding. And just getting to know our process a little bit better. And it's, it's easily summarized really in a five-data meetings. And it's really very much similar to the PCL as far as what are, what are our students doing right now? What do they need to know? And then really taking those steps of, how am I going to improve as a instructor, facilitator of learning? That's been on pause really because of the COVID-19. So that will be something that we do continue with. And the other piece that we had in effective and efficient is our work around a platform called EduClimber. This has been a, our first year with EduClimber. And so what it does is it takes our student information system and the information there and allows us to organize student data in a really easy, user-friendly way. So I joke with people and I say, in five clicks, I can tell you what percentage, your grade level, blah, 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 you know, like that. And so we've been rolling this out slowly and we have that ripple effect, just like the PCL. So we started with a core team, that core team worked with people at their building. We provided professional development. That core team, when we were talking about professional development for EduClimber, they really emphasized that it cannot be small groups of people. That just like Tony or Erin would just get the information. It really had to be everyone, and so that's really how we took that approach this year. One of our pieces on our strategic actions, I wanted to survey staff at the end of the year saying, this is the PD you got all year, can you access this, this, and this? But I think just right now, we're just going to pause on that just because of the time. But what we'll do is we'll come back around that next year, because there will be more features that they can learn in the future. Like I said earlier, I, I get the lucky job to come up here and report. If you have any questions for any of the departments, many of them are here. But I'm happy to help or facilitate any of the questions. Does anyone have questions based on our current plan and the update provided?
Say no questions. It means it was a great update.
Well, that's fantastic. I really have to thank Lenny and Heidi for their job well done before me, too. I do want to share that, you know, this is an interesting time and interesting way to end the year. But we are still thinking about moving forward and what we're going to do to meet our students' needs. And so while some of these things on here are yellow, maybe we haven't done them yet, you'll definitely see that there are two things that really stood out. And that is like the litis, the literacy work as well as the social emotional learning. And even now, we're talking about how are we going to meet our kids' needs next year, given everything that's just been happening? So with the collaboration from curriculum instruction, assessment to pupil services, you know, technology, what we've been doing is aligning our efforts. And really what that means is that as we move forward for next year, we have specific professional development that people will get that integrates the social emotional learning as within the PCL framework. And so it's not like we're going to talk about social emotional learning over here. I'm going to go to this next room and apply this literacy strategy. We're going to embed that together and model that for our teachers, so that they can model that for their students. On the June 5th Professional Development Day, we made a group video, like just introing and foreshadowing that for the staff for next year. But we want them to start thinking about cross-department work. You know, a lot of what we do requires us to collaborate. And we're doing it at the district level. We also are going to look to our staff to do that at, at the school and the site level and teacher level. And they're doing it, but now we're going to make it a little easier and more aligned.
Any questions or thoughts?
Anything for Jen. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Great update. All right. And the next item is West Bend Virtual Academy. Laura.
Good evening. We have, this school year is the last year we're referring to our virtual programming as WOBOLA. There are many times when we've said that name, when people have said, it's a very unfortunate name, and it just was really heightened right now. So when we began the program in 2011, it was called the West Bend Online Learning Academy. And at that time, when we first piloted it, we piloted it with middle and high school students. We've been running the program since in partnership with our, with Wisconsin Virtual Academy. This year, in our course planning guide that was available for students prior to January, as they were doing their course selections, that's where we identified first that we were switching it over to the WBVA from WOBOLA. So we'll refer to it from now on as the West Bend Virtual Academy. It's not an independent school at this time, and maybe in three years it will be. But at this time, it is a program within our schools. So for some students, virtual learning is really the best option, either for some or all of their date. And it is a public school education that occurs at home. And the family may not be literally in their house, they might be at their cabin, or they might be wherever they are at that time. They might be at grandma's, they might be somewhere else in the world. But they're a West Bend student who is attending public school virtually. Currently in WOBOLA, we have some students who are full-time and some students who are just taking a few courses. And there are different reasons that students do that. In December, when we posted our, every December, we identified the educational options available to students in the West Bend School District. And at that time, we indicated that the program would expand to, from 712 to K-12. We didn't at that time expect to be in the situation we are now in. And I just really want to take a little time today to talk a little bit about the program. We'll come back on June 15th and do a more in-depth presentation with you. But I wanted to give you some food for thought. Also ask you if you have any questions that you explicitly would like me to target next time, I would be glad to do so. Yes?
Can I ask that now, or is that something you'd like me to email to you?
Ask it. And if I forget it, I will email you.
Okay, great. I know that when school starts in the fall, it, things are going to look a little different and we still don't know what that's going to be yet. And I really like that, that this is happening, the virtual school. I also like that it's part of the West Bend School District. And I imagine that other districts are going to develop their own programs. And I don't want to see, well, I can, I can foresee a time when districts are competing for students to choice into their school. And right now, I hope that's not the focus. However, I do see this as a benefit to kids that may become ill. And if this is in parallel with the existing curriculum, in-person school, then, then we can have kids come back to school. And if they have to quarantine for a couple of weeks, or they have a family member who's sick, then they can continue with their studies on the virtual path. I guess sort of like change what road they're on, but it's, but it's still in alignment with what they would be doing in person. And then that way, when they can come back to school, then they can jump right back in. Is, is that a consideration?
So that's not the same.
Okay.
It is as if you were taking a different class. And so to, with our current programming, to do that is to literally switch classes. You're switching from one class to another. They're parallel, not identical. So additionally, with the Virtual Academy, as we've been running it, students might complete a class in November and then sign up for another one. And so that, that does not align well with semesters. And so there, that has posed some challenges. It is. With the Virtual Academy, it will be an either-or choice. And the goal would be to, if it's not working for someone, we would, we would be switching out at semester.
Okay. And they would do it on their own timeline, so they could accelerate themselves if they choose?
That is an option. There will be face-to-face, not face-to-face, but synchronous. So appointed class times that you have to be present for. And, but it's not, if your class is an hour long, you might have a 30-minute lesson and then application of that learning. And so it's not, it's a parallel curriculum, not identical.
So what problem is this solving?
The problem that it would be solving is that we have students who would, for a variety of reasons, and their parents who, for a variety of reasons, would prefer to have a virtual education. We've had a number of younger families reaching, families with younger children reaching out to us over the last several years. And to see if we had that. We've only had that available 712, and we've always prioritized our high school students. So previously, we had a set dollar amount. And the, once we reached that limit, we would put students on a waiting list. And so that did, we did lose students to open enrollment because the situation you described, where there are districts out there that will accept, and is something that we're facing regularly. And so we did, would lose students to open enrollment because they'd be on a waiting list and not able to access that. We expanded that for this school year. So we had a, a set number, really defined by the budget. We expanded that this school year, and we did maximize that this school year, again. So we're trying to meet the need. And without this situation, we still weren't doing it. So we know that there are more out there that would prefer this setting for their students. It's not the same as emergency distance learning, and I don't want, they're comparing very different things. A virtual school education is something planned for, intentionally delivered through a platform, and you have spent the time working with it in order to get it up and running, so that when you are delivering the instruction, it is seamless. That is very different than emergency distance learning that happens in response to the situation we're in.
Laura, can I just, a couple of things. Last year, when we looked at our open enrollment numbers, we identified that the number one reason for kids leaving the district wasn't because they wanted to go to a neighboring school, it was because they wanted a virtual school opportunity. So that was the, so that was the number one reason why kids were leaving the district. Last year, as far as open enrollment out, it was for the virtual school setting. Having said that, we know that, I want to say Sharon has identified to the nurses, at least 50 kids who will not be coming back to school. I, none of us have a crystal ball, okay? I believe that we're going to be face-to-face next fall. I certainly hope so. I believe that we're going to be face-to-face. It might be a little bit different setting than what we're used to, but we're going to have a face-to-face setting. At least that's what I believe, okay? Even with that, the nurses have identified, and I want to say 50 students who are medically fragile to the point where they will not be back in school. So that, at least to begin with, their setting is going to be a virtual environment. That's the ones that we've already identified as medically fragile. That's not talking about the other students who's maybe have a mom or dad who have conditions that they don't want their kids to come in and potentially be exposed to coronavirus. So that, that 50 potentially doubles, okay? And I, I don't have the numbers, but I'm saying that it's going to be more than 50 if that's the first part. The other part is that we truly believe, even if it's not a medical issue, we believe that there will be kids next fall with their parents to say, you know what, even though you're, we're okay with having school, we're not quite ready to send them back yet. And so we, and as difficult it was for us to have distance education this year, to have distance and face-to-face at the same time is just not, it's not going to happen with our teachers. It's just, that's asking more than what they can do. It is to do a virtual setting for 10 kids and a face-to-face setting for 120, if you're in the high school. It's just that, so you really have to have that option. And so what Laura is going to, you know, what we're going to present to you in February at the 15th meeting is this is the software that we think is the best scenario. And to go back, Laura, I'm not so sure that if it really wasn't working, could you come back before semester? Well, maybe, I don't know. It's not any different than if you transferred in from, from Madison, and Madison was on a different book, a different chapter than what we are when we move back in. We wouldn't necessarily say you couldn't come until semester time. It's not designed to be that. It's designed to be a commitment, and it's not easier. It's, it's a difficult curriculum. It's a curriculum that requires parental involvement, it requires a variety of different things. But it really does meet the need, and we were proposing that even without COVID-19. We were going to propose it just to try to recapture some of those kids that we're losing and provide a different opportunity. But it just escalated with the pandemic, because we know that those numbers are going to increase significantly. I don't know if that answers your question, Tony, as to why, what purpose we're going to try to accomplish. That really is the reason for it.
I, I appreciate that answer. And as the parent of a high school student that attends a private online school, I know how competitive that space is. And it's a whole different business model. It's kind of like, I mean, we're in the business of educating kids in person. And you're talking about entering a realm that while it's still education, it's so different. I, I don't know if, I mean, it's going to take so many resources to, to become competitive in that. And if the reason is to just retain students that we have that live in this district, I'm not sure. I, I would need to see some financial benefit to why that's worth pursuing. I see alternative reasons for, for doing it, such as what, what I mentioned. But I have my, I have questions.
Part of the difference is, we're not trying to duplicate the online service. We're buying the online service from somebody who does that for their living. And so if we were going to try to get into a virtual school where we have 27 teachers who are providing online curriculum, and the cost of having 27 full-time teachers, that's a whole different ballgame than us buying the service from another vendor. And that's truly what we're looking at, is buying the service from another vendor. And for the most part, when we buy that service from the other vendor, it's the vendor that many of our kids are using right now as they open enrolled out to a different school. So that, that if I open enroll to Madison for online, it isn't necessarily that Madison is doing the teaching, is Madison has the software that they purchased from K-12 Online, or whatever company they're looking at. And so that's truly what we're doing. We're not, because we don't have the resources to try to get into a online setting where we're doing the instruction. We're just trying to provide the software that we can purchase, so that we're using somebody else's online instruction.
So, so instead of creating our own from scratch, we're, we're directing them towards something else? And then, and then the West Bend School District becomes the middle person, instead of Madison becoming the middle person? Or the funnel, the?
Yes. Our current program, we purchase the coursework through Wisconsin Virtual Academy.
Okay.
That is, does not go down That is, does not go down to kindergarten. And that is really what we've been doing since we started the program in the district. And we have a local education mentor. One of our counselors has always been the support person there. And so that person meets with the families and gets the student enrolled. Some of our students are full-time, as I said. Some of them are taking like band or choir orchestra here and face to face and, or some of their lab classes face to face while the rest of their courses are through the virtual school. That is what we are, we are not prepared to start a virtual school on our own here. However, depending on which provider we would, were to select and finally select the training models. Each of them has a training model so that within three years, we potentially could have our staff up and running.
Yeah, I can see, okay, I can see the value in that. And what, your answer also explains why you can't change lanes for a few weeks and dive back in because it is, it's a different school in reality. Okay, thank you.
So the, some of the, the things that we need to consider, I'm going to go back a slide, are just with the virtual program, the at-home mentor is really critical. There's a local education mentor that's an employee of the district. But the at-home mentor is, is very critical. At the elementary level, the students are young and need that assistance in getting into their classrooms, supervising them while they're doing their work, while they're interacting with their online instructor. And so it is not a, you can sit your child down and they will be educated format. And that at-home mentor is really heavily involved. So a family seeking this has to know that, that that's really important. It's also not going to, because there are synchronous meetings. It can't just be, the child will be in class from five PM to eight PM. It will be, there will be, need to be contact time during the day. And during the virtual school, attendance is taken. And thus, the system we currently use monitors login and completion of work to determine attendance.
So Laura, just for my frank ignorance, I know this is going to sound like a silly question, but when you say at-home mentor, you're talking about someone who's not an employee of the district who actually sits at the student's home to encourage?
I'm talking about the parent.
Usually a parent.
But it might be an aunt or an uncle or a grandparent or a friend and neighbor that has nanny, whatever. The at-home mentor is up to the family. But it's truly a partnership. It's not where, when you're attending public school face to face, you may choose to volunteer and participate in class with your students in different ways. But you really are dropping this child off, and they're being educated by someone else during the day. Through the virtual program, the at-home mentor is important because at troubleshooting the technology, if there happens to be an issue on a particular day or whatever, not all, you know, you don't want to rely on a six-year-old to do that or an eight-year-old to do that.
Or a sixty-two-year-old to do that.
But actually, but actually Laura, just a quick follow-up to that then. Is that a criteria? I mean, can that option be withheld by the district? If the district says, I'm not convinced that there is going to be an adequate at-home mentor?
So we currently have an agreement that the parent and the student both enter into with the district. So there's currently a document that they sign and, and actually initially each component that indicates that there will be an at-home mentor. Not the actual language we currently use, but what we'll be moving to is the, it is currently dislisted as the parent provides the support. But yeah, we'll have that as part of the, an agreement. We also, there's, it's not just a, I'm going to register. We explain how it's different and what the, we want people to have realistic expectations when they enter into it.
So, wait, I have another question. So, I mean, obviously for public schools, we have DPI and we have other people overseeing it. So who's the governing body or the overseer of this program? I mean, how do we, I mean, I think Chris was kind of hitting on it. I guess I'm trying to say the same thing. So what if we have student A who, yep, parents sign off, kids sign off, and, you know, we have seven kids who fail? Like, where's our recourse?
Our local education mentor is, so while the instruction is being provided by Wisconsin Virtual Academy right now, our local education mentor is checking in with students at least on a weekly basis and monitoring their progress, what they're completing, communicating with the parents through email, sometimes through face-to-face conferences, phone calls. So we still have, like, currently it's one of our high school counselors, and she's, she'll be the person again next year, and who kind of oversees that. We are still required, even though it's in a virtual setting, and no matter what vendor we would purchase this from or use, which vendor's program we would be using, you have to have a Wisconsin licensed teacher. And so that's one of the criterias, is that it's a Wisconsin licensed teacher. The program has to be aligned to our standards, so there are oversights. And frankly, there are places that are considered and rejected because of that.
So is, are these students counted then in our student report card, and how does that show up?
So all of the students who would be participating are still assessed here. Yes, they're counted in our report card. They are, because it's a program of our schools, they are attributed to the school that they, whatever their attendance area school is. Currently, the, at the high schools, we have a Badger student participating and high school students. So they're either east, west, or Badger.
And Laura, you said it, but they are required to take the Wisconsin Forward so that they literally have to come in and take the test, just like everybody else. And is that face to, is that in our setting, or can they do that at home?
No, they have to come into our setting.
Okay, so I thought so. So when they do the test, they have to, to be physically in the buildings when they do the Wisconsin Forward testing?
So Laura, I'm looking on the Wisconsin Virtual Academy website. So Nancy, to your question, this is McFarland School District built their own model on the K-12 engine, and now they're making it available. So what's to stop me from enrolling my child directly with WVA and bypassing all of this? Or is there an agreement that anybody from the West Bend District has to go through this conduit?
We don't currently have that agreement with WVA. Some of the others that we're considering we would have that which would also include our currently open enrolled out students would then become our student again.
I'm sorry. Hold on. So if we go with this program, you're saying I can just join, or my student, not me personally, my student could just join this? And then hence, we're paying open enrollment dollars out to McFarland. Is that true?
The, what currently exists is there are virtual schools all over that are identified as specific schools. So we have students currently that are open enrolled to McFarland. We have current students open enrolled to Medford, Ozaki Virtual School. And so the open enrollment dollars follow them. What I think Paul was saying is a parent can choose to homeschool their child and then log in, call K-12 or Florida Virtual School or some of those other vendors and just purchase the classes from them themselves. And so that is an option that parents currently have, and then they're not a student of the Wisconsin Public Schools. So yes, they can do that. Then they're, they're considered a homeschool student, and they're not part of the West Bend District. They don't take state tests in. And we have no revenue dollars or responsibility for their education at that point. We don't pay.
Excuse me, we don't pay for them, but nor do we receive any revenue. So truly, our, any of our homeschool students, there is no revenue for them. If they're open enrolled out, then there's, we collect the revenue. We pay tuition to the school that they're going to, whether it's McFarland or whether it's Ozaki or wherever the case might be. But if they're homeschooled, there is no revenue coming in. There, or if they go to a parochial school, there's no revenue coming in. It's just strictly, the student is not ours. If they open enroll out, then we do collect money and we send the receiving district a check, just like we get a check. And sometimes we break even, sometimes we make a dollar ninety-seven, and sometimes we lose money depending on if they're a special needs child or not.
I think one of the things you were asking, Nancy, and I could be wrong. But we don't, we do want to, if, if kids are going to be doing this and open enrolling to these virtual schools, they might as well be
Ours.
open enrolling to ours. So we're kind of stopping the, the flow of money out.
And that's my question is,
Yeah, but are we really stopping it?
If we're just rebranding WVA, what's to stop me from open enrolling and going, you know, cutting out the middleman, so to speak? I would want to have a contract with our chosen provider that anybody that approaches you directly has to go through West Bend School District. Otherwise, what's our value add in the mix? Yeah, we, we lose the money and we want to, we want to stop that, but we've, we need to, we need to stop it then.
Well, I mean, I think this provides us with an opportunity to try and capture some of those students back. It's just the marketing of it and how we put it out there. I mean, quite honestly, this is, you know, marketing 101. You know, we have a service that you would like. This is why our service is better than company X, Y, and Z or school district X, Y, and Z. So really, it's back on us to do a better job of marketing this to the students that want it. So I don't, what do we have, seventy-one current kids? Is that what it's telling me?
That are active open enrolled out.
Okay.
This year requesting for next year, open enrolled out fifty-one applications for virtual schools. And then the, I sent a note to families just of, asking if they had a request for further information. And we currently have a hundred and six different requests for further information. The, one of the advantages is if you are a virtual school student who is living in West Bend and you are open enrolling to McFarland, it may be more challenging for you to participate in extracurricular activities. Any, any virtual school student who is attending West Bend can participate in extracurricular activities. And again, I mentioned that we have some that are coming onsite for band. At currently, if you're a homeschool student who's attending virtual school, if you are a, I'm sorry, if you are an open enrolled out student at the elementary level and you, you're not taking art, music, and Fayed here, a student of the West Bend School District who resides in the Decorah area but attends virtual school, might go to Decorah for art, music, and PE, and still have some of that face-to-face student contact time. Access to our career center is a significant bonus. But you're right, that hasn't been promoted at this point.
At the high school level, if I was athletically gifted, so this is hypothetical, but if I, if I was, if I was a full-time virtual student through the West Bend program, could I still participate in football or basketball?
Yep.
That's a plus right there.
So I, I guess then that will lead me back to my marketing question. So what's the plan on how to market this in a different way? I mean, I understand you're laying out the plan, but I'm hoping that we have a communications and a marketing plan that matches or is even more robust than what you're laying out for us now.
So I hear that you want to see that next time. All right, so expect us back in June for more information, more including the marketing. It is, you're right. And I kept putting the eighteenth on everything. So I, yeah, well, we have some things to finalize. And then the fifteenth, we will be back to address, we have to address other inquiries, but we'll also be addressing yours at that time.
Okay, Laura, thanks. Clearly, this is a topic that's got a bunch of interests. And just to make a comment, you know, when, when COVID, when COVID hit, and at our company, we had to switch, you know, almost unwillingly to working from home. And we were never really big on working from home. Well, we actually found out, you know what, this working from home thing isn't that bad, both for the employee and, and for, and for the company. And Don, to what you were talking about before, there could be students who are medically fragile. There could be students whose parents are medically fragile. But I just wonder how many, how many parents and students are going to say, you know what, this working, this, this, this education from home, my student's actually doing better. I want to do more of it. And so, you know, you wonder if there isn't just going to be some additional demand. And maybe that's a dimension of what you had talked about, Don, but I, I think we can anticipate greater demand. But that's just Chris trying to gaze into a very cloudy crystal ball, so.
Well, and I think with what we heard on the PCL side, you know, the release and letting the student go do their own thing. And, and my daughter, as a senior, very much appreciated the personal time to go at her own pace. And yes, you miss the social dynamic, and, and we'd have to figure out how to backfill that. But there may be some families who, medical issues are not an issue, but it's a fact that they've, they've learned a new way of, of doing this, and they want to try it, maybe on a few classes this next year, and then we'll see what happens next. So I like the option of, of offering it out there.
We, when we talk next time, we'll talk about what do we want to do to meet demand? Do we want, or do we need to stick to enrollment caps? And so we'll talk about that next time.
Great. All right, Laura, and I think unless there's other items for discussion on that topic, the next item is first reading of a number of policies, correct?
Correct. So we have the first reading of all of those policies. Three sixty-one, three sixty-three point two, three sixty-three point three, three seventy. I would like to talk about the co-curricular policies separately and explain some things with how they are in your board docs. Are there any questions on three sixty-one point one?
Maybe, Laura, can you just give us a, what was the reason for the change? I mean, I, I read through these, but I'm kind of like, you know, is this really just because they have, some hadn't been updated for years? I mean, I thought I noticed one was like from seventy-four or something.
Yeah, some of them have not been updated for years. And we did go and really stick to that alignment with WASB. We appreciate the legal perspective that WASB gives. And three sixty-one point one, you can see, the original was created in nineteen seventy. We did revise it in between, but the, we did, are recommending the WASB one. The policy committee did discuss that. There's some very specific differences that are just more in line with how education works rather than, but there's not substantial like, oh my gosh, this is a drastic change from how we selected resources in the past, but just more clarity and in the process.
Other questions on that policy? And this is a first reading, so we move on to the next one then, three sixty-three point two.
Three sixty-three point two is a student acceptable use, so Tim is going to come on up.
Good evening, board members. That's fine. It's fine if it drops on that. I know, guys, I can work on it. Yeah, I'm not too worried. Don's over there. He'll help me out. So I have two policies within here. The first one, three sixty-three point two, is our student, what is currently known as our student acceptable use policy. What'll actually change into student responsible use would be the title, which is the nomenclature that you would see used today in policy writing. The current policy is five pages long. I wrote it when I moved over here at that time, when we were just delving into technology here at a deeper learning level in the school district. It is riddled with a lot of things that belong in an administrative rule. And so part of our process every year requires our students to read and go through all of this. So you can imagine what five pages looks like to a fifth grader. And do they really understand the language that's in the current policy? And so the policy that you see in front of you is really the, the smaller portion of it that is based upon WASB and WASB's work. We would then, upon approval by the board of the policy, we would write in administrative rule that is specific to certain grade levels and so forth. So it really condenses down what we believe is, is responsible or acceptable use for our students here. So thus, you see a large decrease in the amount of text in that document. Any questions?
Just a real quick comment. Up until three years ago, we did not use WASB as our sort of guide. Okay, everything was really on our own. And so three years ago, some And so three years ago, some of you were just starting on the board, and that's when you decided to purchase the WASB services. And so almost every one of the policies that we look at today is very much WASB-driven. So we might tweak it a little bit to make it a little more West Bend or not. But before, three years ago, if it was, if there was a correlation to WASB, it was by chance rather than by design.
And when we wrote the policy, three sixty-three point two, being so new in what we were doing with using technology in the classroom, and we're starting the mobile device there and bring your own device, and I remember going through policy committee a couple of times with this one, we tried to write every single avenue or response to the what-ifs into the policy, which just makes it very difficult to be able to make that adjustment on the fly, where an administrative rule would be very much appreciated with that.
Other questions? All right. Let's see, let's see, student acceptable use, is that the next one? That's the one we were on. No, three sixty-three point three would be the next one, student access to networked information resources.
So this policy is an overarching policy that really is just a little bit of a philosophy of the Board of Education or the school district on access to information online. And so really, the update is really switching from Board of Education to School Board, and also talking about not just being information resources that we are going out and utilizing in the classroom, but also digital tools to collaborate and work together and broaden beyond working with the local community. Clarifies a couple of things of how we actually operate or how we should operate in terms of if we have an issue with a student and the fact of who can adjust that student's access here. Originally had talked about just, you know, the principal side of things, or for somebody being else being able to decide that, we wanna make sure that was decided in my department, so we can't overpromise something that we can't really do and so forth. But it really talks about that change from information to a variety of digital tools we may use in the educational environment.
Any questions? All right. And again, this is a first reading, so this will come back again for further consideration.
Thank you.
Laura, I think we have the co-curricular activities. One's next.
So I, to clarify, we have the policy three seventy, and then we have three exhibits. In board docs is the current and the proposed for each of those. There is currently an AR for three seventy. With the proposed policy, the AR would not be necessary because our current AR does not have a lot of substance to it and describes what's in the policy forthcoming. So the co-curricular policy really just defines what a co-curricular is, and then what the, how the school board interprets that, what the, what is required to participate, and then that we will allow students to engage in co-curricular and do not discriminate. Then the exhibits describe the process for proposing a co-curricular and the criteria used. The current order of those is a little different than the proposed order. The proposed order would have the first exhibit be describing how the process for suggesting a new co-curricular. The second exhibit B would be the application, and then exhibit C, the criteria on which that application will be judged. In the proposed policy, we have currently, we have retained some language from the original policy. Again, otherwise, it is the WASB recommended policy. But the green section, you can see, is the language from our current policy that has been retained.
So interestingly, the WASB policy did not have the statement, "Parents have a right to be informed and shall provide informed written consent." That's a West Bend ad, is that correct?
It is.
It's interesting.
Yeah, when we discussed that in our committee, that's been in our current policy for a long time. And we had Ralph Schloss on the phone with us, and, you know, we asked him the question, is it ever hard to get written consent? Do clubs and organ, you know, the extracurricular organizations actually do that? And his answer was yes. And he said, "We look at it as a way of informing our parents where their kids are after school." And, you know, if my kid's not coming home till five o'clock, where are they? And so, well, they're, they're a part of the yearbook club, or they're a part of the whatever. And so he felt that it was important, it was not a deterrent in his mind. And if a kid wants to join a club that, you know, maybe mom or dad doesn't think that they should, then he talked about, you know, then we can, the student can certainly work with the club sponsor or another teacher to advocate, you know, that, for the kid to the parent of why, you know, they think they should join the club. So that's kind of why we kept it in there. He thought it was still a good procedure to do and wasn't a deterrent for joining a club.
Thanks. Any questions on this one? All right. There were, I know there were some exhibits, I think you had addressed that, correct?
Yes, and just to clarify, recently, we had an exhibit come forward that needed board approval. That was because of the content of the exhibit, not the fact that an exhibit always has to be approved by the board. So one of the questions the policy committee had was if the exhibits are attached to the policy and not to an AR, and we needed to tweak something on the form, do we, are you going to have to bring the form back to the school board for approval in order to tweak that? And we have verified that process, and we would not for those exhibits.
So the exhibits are really there for the convenience of someone who's looking up the policy that it's there. So tweaking, tweaking the form could be done rapidly and, and posted to the website. Okay. Great. Unless there are other questions, this one will come back, since this was a first reading. All right. Thank you. Then we are on to a different first reading, new board policy, five thirty-six point six, reduction in force support staff. Mr. Hanson.
Thank you for inviting me to talk about this policy. As it talks about in your exec summary, this policy is really a follow-up to a policy approved by this board, you know, roughly five months ago, which was a reduction in force policy for all contracted staff, which include all certified staff, administrators, and so on. Prior to that passage, we had no process in place for if we had to do any kind of layoff or reduction in force, how we would go about selecting those employees. There was no formal process. At that time, we talked quite a bit, both at policy committee and here at the board, about the importance of protecting the district from potential litigation by putting a policy in place, and then, of course, following it. I felt that during that, those series of months and discussions, we really came to agreement that the criteria and steps that were laid out were appropriate. So what we've done now is taken basically the same steps and now created a similar policy that would apply for the same scenario for support staff. So obviously, we, you know, the administration believes strongly you should treat support staff the same you treat, you know, contracted staff. So the selection criteria, which is outlined in point C in the policy, is identical to what you would see in the contracted staff policy. The reason for two separate policies is that contracted staff also have some statutory protections that support staff don't have. Support staff are technically at-will employees, whereas obviously contracted staff, administrators, teachers are not. So the certified staff policy is a little bit longer, but when you look at the two, they'd be very similar. We did pass the contracted staff reduction policy, January or February, I'm trying to remember. And as you may recall, around that same time, I reported we may very well have to use that policy. We had enough attrition through retirements and resignations by certified staff that we did not have to use that policy. But we were glad that we had it in place so that we could look at anyone and honestly say, hey, we can ethically tell you clearly how these decisions are made to ensure that they are, meet everybody's standards for fair treatment of employees. So that's really why I'm bringing this for a first reading today, pretty similar to the certified or the contracted staff policy.
Any questions on this one? All right, is this the first reading? We'll see you back for the second.
Sounds good, thank you.
All right, thank you. And then a proposed deletion of board policy three seventy-one, organization, social events, handbook, student information.
This policy does, was written some time ago, originally in nineteen seventy-four, and it really has a lot of things in it, but not a lot of substance to or is not providing a lot of direction to staff on what's necessary and what needs to happen. So the proposal is to remove this policy. If necessary, we will consider a different student organization policy with the co-curricular as-is and coming back for approval. Things not, a student not identified as a co-curricular would be a non-school-sponsored student organization. And that's not fully covered in here.
The policy committee on this one, just, you know, like Laura said, not a lot in this policy. We've got the co-curricular activity policy we just talked about, social events, dances, concerts, social events. You know, our schools and our kids are gonna plan those. I don't know that the school board needs to dictate that those have to happen. I think that nowadays, they just kind of happen. And then the student information kind of talks about the student handbook, which again, we've had, we've distributed a student handbook for decades, and I don't think we ever would stop doing that. I don't know if there's another policy that says we have to have a student handbook, but if there, if there is, great. If there isn't, this policy doesn't say much anyway, so.
Other questions?
Again, this is a recommended deletion of its policy.
So double-check, our board policy on policy says a policy can be deleted after consideration at two meetings, so we'll need to bring it back for a second. All right. Unless there are objections, we'll bring it back for a second reading. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. This is kind of a back and forth here between Laura and Lenny. The next item on our agenda is district clinic medication offerings.
So you remember perhaps back to April twenty-seventh, I presented to the board a little bit about some of the clinic services options that we were gonna be adding for accessibility for employees. So at that time, I talked, for example, about the fast care option that was available through the Meyer store that Freiter provides. At that same time, I also talked about the need to develop a philosophy around what medications are provided by our clinic versus which medications an employee goes to, you know, your typical pharmacy to have filled. At that time, I explained to you that there, you know, since the inception of the clinic in two thousand thirteen, as we conducted analysis, there didn't appear to be any really coherent philosophy or purpose behind which medications were provided and which were not. The board should be aware that those medications provided by the clinic are at zero cost to employee. They don't run through our pharmacy carrier, which is OptumRx. They are truly zero cost, no copay or anything. So the, you know, the thought behind providing them is multi-layered. One is perhaps you get a better price even without that copay through the offering price that the clinic can have. Second is some engagement with the clinic and ease of use. Obviously, our clinic, which is currently located right downstairs, if someone comes in and maybe wants to get right back to work, but they're feeling a little under the weather, yet the clinic right here can dispense, say, an acute, acute illness medication, they don't then have to go over to the pharmacy and get a fill. They can take it, get right back to work. So there's some potential benefit that way as well. Regardless of our shift to the now off-site Freiter clinic, which will take place a month from now on July first, superintendent and director of finance and I had been talking about the real need to determine what is the right medications to offer at the, at the clinic. So while, while the timing of the decision before you does align with when we change clinic providers, they're actually really separate decisions. So we went back, we looked at what is the right way to select what medications might be offered at no, at no cost to the employee. And they laid out four criteria here in your executive summary. Probably the biggest change that we really had a lot of discussion about is around over-the-counter medicine. There are some over-the-counter medicines provided in the clinic currently at no cost, and that's been in place for quite some time. In, in our discussions, we really struggled with the justification behind that when typically, you know, members of our community and whatnot. That's not a, that's not a typical thing that's provided for employees in any company, right? Or even the private, private citizen, right? The other thing we learned is that a number of those over-the-counter medicines, when they were originally provided by the clinic, were not over-the-counter. So I'll use Flonase, for example, is a real popular nasal spray. It was originally a prescription medicine, it was commonly used. Well, three, four years ago, it became an over-the-counter medicine. At that time, I think it would have been wise to remove it from our list of offered medications and have our staff, you know, utilize over-the-counter stores, just retail stores like anyone else. So that is the biggest change, that we do feel, from an ethical, appropriate standpoint, we would remove the over-the-counter medication offerings. Now, we're doing it more so just to have kind of a consistent and, we think, well-defenced position about why we offer certain medications. There is a byproduct that we will save roughly twenty thousand dollars a year in what we were paying for those medicines. To some, that seems like not a lot, but to me, that's about six and a half hours of an aid every day at a building somewhere, so it makes an impact on our budget for sure. Besides that, you know, probably the most, that most critical point of the over-the-counter change, we really want to now engage in a regular cost-benefit analysis behind every drug that's offered through the clinic. So there are some medications that Freiter, our new provider, gets a better price than our pharmacy provider. Well, it's somewhat silly then for us to have our employee go to the pharmacy provider, because as a self-funded insurance entity, we truly experience the actual cost of every medication that is purchased. So if we can save even two dollars per fill, we should save two dollars per fill. That's our obligation. So we will continue to offer medicines that meet that cost-benefit analysis. This is going to both result in some new medications that we can add to the list that we haven't offered before, because they actually will save the district on its bottom line, and may result in the removal of some other medicines down the line as well. We obviously know that any change in medication availability is a big deal for any employee, right? Or any employee's family member. So we are looking at an appropriate timeline for how these types of decisions would take place. So the over-the-counter changes is going to take place on July first, when we move over to the new provider over at Freiter. However, accessibility really isn't a problem there for employees because you can go to Walgreens, you can go to often the gas station and find these over-the-counter medicines, you know, typical allergy meds and things like that. But if we're talking about a prescription being removed, we do need to ensure that we have an adequate amount of advance notice for our employees so that they can take the time to have their prescription moved and over to a more typical pharmacy location. So in there, we talk about kind of the guidelines that we will follow, starting on July first. And then I do have an attachment, which is a piece of information we'll be making sure that we share with staff. But Freiter is part of a certain type, a certain Medicaid program that allows it to sell a number of common over-the-counter medicines at a well-below-market price. So I actually attached that list, which we'll share with staff. But actually, even yourselves, you have access to this as well if you go over to that pharmacy that's now in the Freiter facility, and you'll see there's some really outstanding prices here. So hopefully, this helps some of those employees who have depended on the clinic for that free over-the-counter medication, help, hopefully helps them make that transition in a less difficult manner.
I'm glad this is something the, the district is examining. This whole pharmacy thing is like standing on shifting sand, it seems. So I'm glad that there's going to be, you know, continued discipline to take a look at, to take a look at this. I guess, speaking, you know, as an employee of, an employer in the private sector, this, this would be an interesting benefit to have over-the-counter medication costs. I haven't, I haven't encountered that before. I'm not sure if my colleagues on the board have. But I think that, you know, I appreciate this information too, because based on the price, it seems like pulling that back is not going to imperil someone's, you know, financial status, if you know what I'm saying.
Correct. I mean, obviously, you know, as with any of us, if you've been getting something at zero dollars for a while, you get used to it, right? I mean, that, that's a difficult transition for anyone, but we do think that this is the appropriate step to take. We did talk to We did talk to clinic providers, and the over-the-counter medication offering is not extremely common. It's not unheard of, but it's not extremely common amongst them. So also don't feel that we're going outside the norm by making this shift.
Lenny, when somebody would go in here and get an over-the-counter medication for free, like Tylenol, they were probably only given two tablets, right? I mean, you probably weren't walking out of there with 100, were you?
Well, as of Lenny Hanson's tenure in the, as HR Director, you are correct. So I, when I came in and we started looking at this, I was looking and said, wow, where, you know, there's a bottle of 90 acetaminophen here. I thought that they just needed to be able to, you know, return to work for, until they can get, you know, take care of it for themselves. So we, at that time, on a number of those, switched to blister packs of maybe two or four. But yeah, that was an issue. I think that it's an issue that, going back to 2013, when they first rolled out the clinic, you know, our clinic provider here, the current one, that will be moving away from, this was their first clinic in the entire state of Wisconsin. So the desire to promote
Clinic, yeah.
The clinic like crazy and get engagement, get people in there, I think may have led to some aggressive dispensary offerings that, you know, in retrospect, maybe we should have peeled back on from the beginning.
This isn't, this is, this is a decision, this is put into place, so this is for the Board's information.
Correct, this is for your information. You know, and it certainly does impact some employees who have received some of those over-the-counter medicines at zero cost before, but, so I want you to be aware. But we do think this is the right decision moving forward, and we're prepared to do it on, July 1st does not require action under pressure.
Right. Any other questions? Thank you for the information.
Thank you.
All right, we're near the end of our agenda. The next item is the Superintendent's report.
So several quick items for you. The first one is our next school board meeting is June 15th, and at that point in time, Andy will be presenting two budget scenarios. One will be for an amendment to the 1920 budget. Typically, that happens every May and/or June, where you amend the current budget to bring it up to speed. In this particular case, we'll have some bigger changes because of COVID-19. There are a significant number of things that weren't spent that we had planned on budget, we had budgeted for, and others were additional that we hadn't budgeted for. And so Andy will be bringing you up to speed on the 1920 budget and ask for a budget amendment. We'll also be bringing two or three different budget proposals for you for a preliminary budget for the 2021 school year, okay? In February, we presented a balanced budget to the Board, but it was based on several different things. It was based on the funding spending limit going from $9,700 to $10,000, a $300 increase in the spending limit for the state. It was based on a 2% increase in the special ed categorical aid. It was based on a 1.81% increase in staffing increases based on what the biannual budget was presenting. We know that the state budget is going to be down significant revenue based on COVID-19. A week ago Friday, I was in on a conference call, and they were talking at that point in time. Up through today, we're looking at about a $2 billion budget shortfall based on revenue coming into the state of Wisconsin. We have a rainy day fund in the state of Wisconsin of about $600 million, okay? So that's still about a $1.4 billion budget shortfall based on revenue coming in and the biannual budget that was passed. I don't know the exact number, but I want to say it was 30-some percent. If you took that 1.4 billion dollar shortfall, and you figure out how much of that goes to K-12 education, it's in that 30% range, okay? And so we have been working on budget scenarios where it's, we get everything we planned on. Don't believe that that's going to be the case. Working on budget scenarios where that 2% in the 1.8 CPI increase is not going to be there. We think that's very realistic. We don't know that yet, we don't have a crystal ball. And then also, working on a scenario where that $300 increase in CPI for, or not, excuse me, not CPI, but for low-spending districts is going to go by the wayside as well. That if the state doesn't have any money, and we're at a $9,700 spending cap at this point in time, and the proposal was going to go to a $10,000 spending cap, the only way that that would happen would be a increase in local taxes. It would have to come from our local public in order to go from 97 to 10. And even if that was possible, we just don't think the legislature would do that. We don't think they would say, increase local taxes by 300 to bring that 97 up to 10, okay? And so been looking at a couple different budget scenarios. One is a $2 million shortfall. We think we can handle a $2 million shortfall without significant complications. That we will, you know, there's some money savings over in the clinic, there's some money savings in some other things. We haven't replaced all of the staff members. We've got some other things on the table. Potentially, we can come up to that $2 million scenario without being extremely deep cuts. If that $2 million becomes five and seven, then that becomes a whole different story. And so Mrs. Wimmer was here today, and she said, you know what? She's wearing these, everybody's got these wristbands that says WWJD. And I go, what's that mean? And she goes, what would Jen do? Okay, and so that's, so that's kind of, so the $2 million is okay. The $7 million is what would Jen do? And that's, so thank you, Mrs. Wimmer. So that's, that's where we're at at this point in time. Andy will be giving you a, Andy will be giving you a couple different budget scenarios, very preliminary, but will ask you for approval on a preliminary budget for the next year, knowing that he doesn't have a crystal ball any more than I do, any more than you do. From what I'm hearing is that it will be difficult for us to come up with the kind of budget shortfall to backfill unless there's another federal stimulus package, and that stimulus package is designed specifically for state and local governments. Not necessarily for business, not necessarily for individuals, but state and local government in order for that to happen. I'm not saying it's going to happen, I'm not saying it's the right thing to happen, but I just don't know how we're going to backfill those dollars without it. So that's the first one. Second one is Ralph and John, as well as the graduation committee, have been working on graduation plans. We'll present those to you on the June 15th meeting, and actually, we'll try to get them out to you before that. At this point in time, we are planning on a outdoor graduation with a stage, with all the different things. It'll be at the field. We'll probably come to you and ask for, at this point in time, we said July 12th with the backup day of August 2nd, I believe it is, okay? Going to probably recommend that we go to July 11th, which is a Saturday with a backup rain day on July 12th. And so that hopefully, we could get one of those two days as a graduation date for us to go July 12th with a August 3rd. There's no guarantee that August 3rd is going to be better, weather better suited than July 12th. And so we'll bring that information to you. John and Ralph are working on that information. They're working with the graduation committee. And we'll try to have a, it won't be the same type of graduation, but we're going to try to do everything we can to make it a quality graduation experience, a face-to-face graduation. More than likely, going to limit the number of guests that seniors can bring to the ceremony, just because of space. But we'll, we'll try to do everything we can to make it a quality experience. Schools remain closed for academic and extracurricular activities until June 30th. That has nothing to do with the Safe at Home Order. It has strictly to do with a different set of circumstances. Schools for academic and extracurricular activities are closed until June 30th. Jen has been working on summer school, and we're hoping to start our high school summer school as scheduled. It will be more for credit recovery and remediation and getting caught up with kids who are behind in as a result of COVID-19. But there'll also be other classes as well. The elementary and Silverbrook Summer School, it will, we're planning for virtual with the hopes that we can have some face-to-face as well. Jen, if you would like to jump up and correct me, please do so.
Hi, for summer school, so we're making really good progress given everything that's been thrown at us this year. We, today, we did our last push for summer school enrollment to families at all levels. It will all be virtual. The complication, that's what we announced last time, the complication of planning for virtual and in-person is just really difficult. The one piece that we're on hold for is any of the specialty camps or jump starts that are in August. It's too far down the road to really determine that those will be canceled or not provided, or we'll do them virtual or some sort of accommodation. Our plan is to really look at that in July. But for right now, our summer school, for the high school, it's planned at the dates that we have planned, starts June 15th. We made our last push of communication today to families. We have some open spots. When you look at the two sessions, we have a total of six, over 600 seats signed up for already, so that's really good. I mean, some of this virtual piece, it is working for teachers and students. Some of the teachers have been really excited about, hey, I'm going to take this and keep going. So that's really exciting. So we have the high school well on its way for the planning to start on June 15th. Elementary middle will be in July, July 6th through the 31st, I believe is the last Friday in July. We've had to cancel some of those classes based on format as well as enrollment. That information also was going to parents today from the principals at Silverbrook and for the Silverbrook 4th grade through 7th grade. We really are having our reading and math classes. We really are committed to just encouraging, anyone can still enroll in summer school for that, but the enrichment classes at that level were too difficult to really switch to a virtual format. At the elementary level, we were able to combine and kind of switch a few classes, so we're going to combine sports conditioning and well kids. Those are two classes that we had, about 12 kids in each session. And so working with some great teachers, they got some innovative ideas of how to combine that together. So we will have some enrichment offerings at the elementary in addition to reading and math. What we've been trying to say and communicate is there's still room for reading and math for anyone, even if it's virtual and some of the resources we've been using this year, they can continue to use that during summer school.
Last comment I had is that Ms. Wimmer and I have been doing a hangout or a Zoom once a week for about an hour, just to kind of help with the transition from Don to Jen. And then also today, we spent an hour plus, and I think we're going to try to face-to-face and maybe do another on Wednesday. She's going to come with a great back-to-school plan. I, like I said, none of us have a crystal ball. I truly believe we're going to be in school next fall. I, but I also know that there's going to be some flare-ups, there's going to be some things that are going to happen, and so we're going to have some interruptions. It won't be the same as it's always been. But that's not all bad either, okay? We talked earlier, and I don't know if it was Paul or Chris, we've got kids who really have flourished during the process we've used. It's certainly not for everybody, and it's not the format that we would like to use. But COVID-19 really has provided us with an opportunity to really look at how we do education going forward. And I do not believe, even if COVID-19 would go totally by the wayside, that we should try to go back to a 2018-type scenario, because this is an opportunity for us to look at 2020 and 2021. And there are some things that will be different going forward, and I have been so very impressed with Jen in our comments that we've had. And so I feel extremely fortunate, grateful to the district, and you guys will go forward like never before under Jen's leadership. And so thank you for being here tonight, and so we'll see you again on Wednesday, and we'll try to answer any questions you might have, but we'll go from there.
Don, I think I've asked this question facetiously in the beginning and with a more serious intent as the pandemic wore on. But given where we are now, school year is effectively finished, and we have seen some good results. Given what we've learned and the systems that we've put in place, how the teachers have grown, is it realistic to think that we've seen our last makeup snow day? For, not for 2020, we're not getting any more this year.
Oh, well, it'd be, yeah, so you lost me for just a, you know, the difference will be for the makeup snow days if you don't have the planning in place. To spur the moment at 4 o'clock on Tuesday morning, Jen gets up and calls off school for 6 o'clock. For us to be able to get everything lined up with a virtual lesson might not happen. There's no question that the ACT days that we had this year, when we didn't have school for the freshmen, sophomores, and seniors because we were taking the ACT, there's no reason why we would ever not have a no-school day for those, okay? The part of the virtual for everyone, you know, not everybody's going to have their computers home the whole time. So we had, you know, it was a week process, two-week process for Tim to get all of the elementary computers to elementary teacher, kids. And so I can't guarantee that we won't have snow days going forward. I think we probably will, but hopefully not as many as we have in the past.
Yeah, thank you.
He set the record for the number of school days in a school year, so nowhere to go. I've had a couple of friends ask me, Joel, what are you hearing as far as school in the fall? Are we going back to the fall? And of course, I always answer with, well, that's not going to be my decision. So whose decision is that? Who's going to make that call of whether or not Wisconsin public schools are going to be face-to-face in the fall?
You know, the Department of Health, the Department of Education has the ability to call off school, just like they did this year, okay? From what I have seen, and Jen, you can certainly jump in as well, I believe it's going to be a, for the most part, local decisions. So that if, if there's a major outbreak in West Bend, we might need to do something, but I don't believe what happens in West Bend will necessarily have an impact on what happens in Hudson, okay? Or vice versa. Or Madison might not impact Green Bay the way it did this year. It might, and so they have that ability to do it on a statewide level. From what I have seen and heard coming out of conversations with my colleagues around the state is that more than likely, it's going to be local by local decisions, okay? And that, you know, we will truly need to rely heavily on our local health department, our local agencies as far as some of the recommendations that they're providing, and then our insurance companies or insurance carriers to find out what we do and don't have coverage for. Because if we do things that are truly not safe and not recommended, there's a possibility that you don't have errors and omissions insurance. You're doing it as an individual board member and not as a board that's covered by insurance, okay? And so we have to truly look at our insurance agencies as to make sure that we're not just totally going out on a limb, and then our legal advice as well. And so those would be things that you're going to look to going forward. But I, Joel, I think for the most part, it's going to be a local decision with certain, certainly, the school board is going to be involved in those type of decisions. You know, we called it off to begin with, let you know, I would anticipate we're not going to call off school for two, three, four, five weeks without having special board member, board meetings to figure out where we're at and kind of have a plan in place for that, what takes place.
I just have kind of a general thing. When we do start back at school, is there going to be, and maybe I'm saying this because I'm I'm surrounded by teenagers, and as children, and their friends, and so I'm worried about the social, emotional, mental health of the kids that haven't been in school. I've seen that, and if we continue not being in school, will there be support when we come back to really address those needs? Or I think we're going to have like a mental health pandemic after the COVID.
Yeah, and so Jen is here right now, and Laura as well, but they're really working on a socially-emotional criteria, programming for next fall, and so Laura, you can certainly-
So that's definitely a concern for everybody, and we have to recognize that there's been repeated traumas, even the way it ended, like suddenly, without knowledge when they left school that day. So we know that we need to build things in, and the launch of the school year will look different than any other year has, and that building of the classroom. Then to your, the other part of your question is, if we're still virtual, what are the mental health things that will be in place, and how will kids be able to reach out to the school counselor and have some of those one-on-one times with them? So some of that has gone on during this time, but to Nancy's point earlier, a better marketing for that, so students are more able to access, and maybe so parents know, because there has been reaching out to individual students. But the definitely very strategic plan, we have been looking at some of our district-wide processes, so things that will be put into place across all of our buildings at the elementary level and all the way through.
I guess on that same note, I mean, what about our students, and I realize we can't, you know, we're not responsible per se for what's going on in their home lives, but we know that we have students who potentially have unsafe situations in their homes. So, you know, I've heard a lot of conversation on, that's very scary for some kids right now, because they're stuck in a very scary environment, and without school, that's maybe their only normal thing that they have all day. So how are we working with like our local social services to, you know, I mean, I don't know the kids that are, you know, like in danger, but you do, or counselors know that. I mean, are those kids, you know, are social services checking in on them? Are police checking in on them? I mean, what are we doing to protect those kids?
So if the student has not been in contact with the teacher, if there's been, if they have not been engaging in any of the coursework, any of the reach-outs, there, we had processes in place where the teacher was checking in via email, via phone calls, trying to set up individual hangouts with the student and/or parent, and ultimately, we've had conversations along the way of, is it time to have a wellness check done? So things have happened along those lines, where we have done wellness checks on our families, and that's part of the process. Our family liaisons have been connecting with families during this time to offer encouragement, to offer supports as well.
And then I guess my last comment, we, okay, so we've talked about the social and emotional situation. I would think for elementary students specifically, we're going to have some students that are much more behind than what they normally come back from summer vacation. And I know we have budget cuts, so what are we doing to ensure that we can have enough aides in the classroom, or enough helpers, or, I mean, I'm assuming there's a plan, and maybe that's a what would Jen do question, but I'm assuming we're going to have to have a pretty strong plan for the elementary level. And what does that look like? And I know we can't necessarily add days on for them, so how do you, you know, I guess I want the public to know that we're working really hard on that behind the scenes, and, you know, you're gonna, you're going to ensure, you know, that a third grader who left this year in March will be prepared by the end of 4th grade to move on to 5th grade. It's kind of a big thing.
So we kind of want to look at, now we need more than a year's progress next year. And so during the course of the summer, we will continue to work really hard on that. We've done some check-ins, like with the math program, what has been accomplished this year, so that we can start looking at condensing that. And we will have people in over the summer. So the specifics on instruction, when I asked that question of our, let's say, our teachers in the bridges program, so that's K-5, what did you accomplish this year in the math program? With that was, and are you willing to help us develop a solution for fall? And so we have some dates on the calendar for summer for that, people to come in and help work on those specific instructional details. The literacy program is very individualized, and you heard a great representation of that today, whereas while they're doing some whole group mini lessons, the individual growth of the student is very specific, and the conferring pushes that child and their individual growth. So we will, we're continuing to move forward with the implementation of those, the structures, the structures that are, we put in place this year, the language workshop as well, and the conferring, and then we'll add a little more to that. So the literacy is really specific to shifting the individual child, but it comes again, what, to get that year and a half growth, or, you know, I'm just going to say year and a half, more than a year's growth for our students, we need to first know where they are, and then be strategic in what we're doing and what we're not doing, because some of it is what we're not doing.
Just some little thoughts that we may be, so if you look, there's a mobile hand sanitizer when you come in, and so we have 10 different buildings. How many hand sanitizers do we put in the buildings next year? Okay? Yeah, so, yeah, and so how do we, you know, so there's just a ton of those kind of questions. So water fountains, for the most part, are gone. Okay? We won't be using water fountains next year, but we'll probably be using bottle fillers. Okay? And so do we have, and you can't just have two bottle fillers at the high school and think we're have adequate bottle fillers. And so how many new bottle fillers do we need to go, because we aren't using the water fountains anymore? Lunch, how do we, how do we have a lunch environment where we don't have everybody, you know, obviously the, unfortunately, the buffets are gone, okay? And so I don't know what I'm going to do when there's no more buffets around, and so the buffets are gone, and a lot of the way that we feed kids is going to change. And so even though I say that we're going to be in school next fall, and I really believe that, it's not going to be the same as it was before, because we're going to have to make some major changes on how we're trying to do everything possible to keep our students and our faculty and our parents safe, and at the same time, provide quality education for all of them. And so there'll be lots of challenges, and take a week off in the next couple of weeks, because that's the last time you're going to get one off, Jen.
Great. Thank you. All right, and thanks to administration for setting up this environment for us. Appreciate it very much. It's great, again, to participate in a face-to-face meeting. It's, I think this is the first face-to-face meeting I've participated in, even for work in months, so this is really a luxury. Our board meeting calendar was posted in Board Docs. Our June 15 meeting, we converted today to a special meeting. I believe those are all the items on the agenda.
Don will be there.
Great. Thank you for asking that. Any other topics to come before this board? If not a motion to adjourn, would be in order.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. Any final discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thanks, everyone.